Good evening, everyone. Call our meeting to order tonight, Thursday, June 1st, 2023. A regularly scheduled Board of Selectmen's meeting. I ask that we please all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay, our next thing would be additions and changes to the agenda. I personally, I've got a couple of them. One of them, Tiffany is going to be late. She had a wake that she had to go to. So she's asked if we could do the proclamation discussion after she comes on. I said, fine. And then the other thing was going to be on the good to know special recognition. Andy had talked to Rich Marzy, but Andy, do you see him on here or no?
I do not.
So if Andy could talk to that, does anybody have an issue with with that?
Nope.
Okay. So Andy, it's up to you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just kind of wanted to recognize Rich Marzy has done quite a bit of work behind the scenes for a few years now and is very instrumental along with the Parks and Recs Department in the farmer's market. So the new farmer's market is going to be at Hebron Elementary and it's going to be one Saturday a month from June through October. And the first farmer's market would be this Saturday and it runs from 9:00 to 12:00 a.m. So we're hoping that's going to help the attendance. They got a few more people selling their wares at the market. So hopefully people can support that. And then secondly, Rich has also been very instrumental along with a lot of other people for Hebron Day, which has grown into quite an event. And that is on the 17th and that starts at 10:30 a.m. And it runs till 2:30 in the afternoon. So I was just hoping to give Rich a little kudos and recognition, but at the same time try to get the word out about these two wonderful events in our community.
Okay, thank you, and I apologize. I stepped out of order. Got Tom additions and changes to the agenda and I inadvertently went over the public comment section. So with that, going back to the public comment section, this is a part of the agenda that's reserved for people in attendance who wish to briefly address the board. The board requests that comments be limited to three minutes or less. People wishing to comment should type comment and your name in the chat box and you will be recognized. So I don't know if we have anybody.
Carrie McManus has a public comment.
Okay, go ahead, Carrie.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Carrie McManus, 169 North Street, speaking as a citizen of the town. Good evening. And that we as a town appear to be at loggerheads with one another on just about all issues concerning the running of this town. It appears that it will take some time before we are able to start design work on a new DPW facility. The actual building commissioning and turning over to the town of a functioning facility is probably two to five years away. The very real problem facing the DPW employees today and every day is the existing facility is not safe to be working in. It, in my opinion now, it's just my opinion. My opinion is an immediate, it is an immediate threat to the health, safety and well-being of our employees. And I feel it's my responsibility as a citizen of our town to bring these concerns forward. North Building, the order of the two, needs to be carefully emptied of material and then roped off, torn down as soon as possible. It is in imminent danger of collapse. The practice of parking our vehicles in a building that does not have enough space places our employees at risk every time the practice is performed. And additionally places employees in harm's way whenever they need to climb over the plows to move anywhere in the building. These are just two of numerous concerns that I have. And I think we're all aware of the need here. Now, how to achieve the vacating of the current DPW temporary facility, one option. There's plenty of options, I'm sure, but there's plenty of room at Burn Hill Park to facilitate the officeing of our DPW staff and plenty of room to park equipment on a temporary basis. The tools and the lift used for vehicle maintenance will have to be used for the foreseeable future of the existing DPW, but equipment can be routed in and out on a preventative maintenance or emergency schedule from the new temporary staging area. Employees needing to perform such duties can travel there from Burn Hill Park and from Mustering for starter day. I'm just a roughneck and has traveled a bit. Spanning 40 years, I've worked in numerous industrial facilities located around the world. In no time was I asked working conditions such as those that exist at our current DPW. I believe they, I believe that we should not ask our employees to continue to do so. Mr. Chair, I ask the Board of Selectmen to direct the town manager to start work on vacating the existing DPW and moving town personnel to temporary facilities conducive to a safe and healthy working environment. Thank you, and thank you for your time, everybody.
Thank you.
And next up for public comment is Nicole Collins.
Okay. Um, my name's Nikki Collins. I'm a mom and a Hebron resident and I wanted to take a moment to just express our gratitude and hope. Um, in the winter of 2022, I agreed to help a teen from our town start a group called Small Town Pride, which is a group for people in our community and small communities like ours feel safe, connected and have some fun. And along with some other adult members and youth members from Ram, Hebron Elementary School, Gideon Elementary School and other local schools, we work to promote inclusion and kindness. It's been important to our founding members that this group has events and support that is friendly for all ages and all types of people. We've even brainstormed ways to respond to comments that are negative, less than favorable, and sometimes hateful from our own community members. Those comments do exist here in our community of Hebron and we have heard these in some of our government meetings too. We hope that we can model kindness in the face of comments like this. We want to thank the members of the board that have opened the door to more inclusive and accepting Hebron. We have had well-known Republicans and Democrats sponsor our events, which reminds us that this is not a partisan issue. It gives us some relief that Hebron can have support like this to this kind of community. A simple proclamation that you'll be doing a little bit later when Tiffany gets here can bring moments of hope and relief to our community. And so once again, we at Small Town Pride and myself as a community member, thank you. We invite you to meet our members. We are having Hebron's first Pride celebration on June 30th at the Douglas Library in partnership with them. We invite you to come and ask questions, join in with our volunteers. I believe we sent an email to your group to see if anyone wanted to join as well as other board members in town or possibly some of the political parties in town to join us with that. We want to have you feel welcome in joining us and showing the LGBTQ plus people in our community, families, friends and allies that Hebron actually cares about their happiness and their safety. And we wanted to thank you for your time and efforts in this type of proclamation and these supports because the kids are watching us and we really want them to feel proud of our government and safe in our community.
Thank you. Next.
And Nikki Matthews is next.
Hi, I'm sorry, can everybody hear me? I had to just step out of the Board of Education meeting.
Yes.
Okay. My name's Nicole Matthews. I live at 60 Old Daniels Lane in Amston. I want to address two vastly different subjects this evening. First, I'd like to discuss your chair's actions at the Board of Finance meeting last week. Dan was speaking during public comment and behaved in a manner completely unbecoming of an elected official. He chastised the attendees, made multiple women uncomfortable enough to physically move away from him and lunge toward me when I said something. He came off as completely unhinged while yelling at everyone, scolding us for not volunteering for the fire department and blaming us for the need for staffing agencies that, as they affect our taxes. Dan, I don't know if you're aware of what's going on outside of Hebron, but there are approximately five out of 64 nonprofit agencies in Connecticut that don't utilize staffing. And there is a nationwide shortage of even paid EMTs and medics, which includes you as your cert has not been active for nine years. What you also didn't know is that the two women who you were so goodly chastising right next to you started our combined 50 years of fire and EMS services volunteers while we were still teenagers. Tack on my brothers and you're looking at a family legacy of over 100 years of fire medic service. I'm clearly still volunteering as I have been a very active member of the DTC since moving to town and also sit on a board, neither of which provide me with a tax abatement or any part of a pension as a fire department does. If anyone at that meeting was considering volunteering, I'm certain that your rant has to, will have deterred them. I would think that your behavior would be an embarrassment to any fire and EMS personnel who witnessed it as well as to any members of this board who see it. I would urge the board to consider how they'd like to be represented in public by the person whom they elected chair, especially as this is placed in front of a large group of children. Now, more importantly, I would like to lend my support to the Pride Month proclamation that will be put forward tonight. Proclamations like this one don't seem like a big deal to many, but I assure you that they matter. They let the LGBTQ community know that the majority of those making large scale decisions for the town recognize them and support them. They send a message of allyship in a world where their rights are consistently and persistently challenged and trampled on. The rates of suicidal ideation and attempt by LGBTQ youth is nearly twice that of their peers, rates that aren't caused by the mere fact of being part of the LGBTQ community, but that are due to societal stigma and the resulting strain it has on their mental health. This proclamation will convey acceptance, acknowledgement and determination to create a kinder, more inclusive community. Commentary that belittles the significance of this month sends a completely different message, but one that is crystal clear. When discussing the proclamation, please bear in mind that our kids are watching and listening. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
That looks like it for now.
Okay, beautiful.
Thank you.
Our next would be our town manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Try to be brief. So starting off, we opened the bids for the Wall Street sidewalk this week. We had one bid and the bid is quite a bit over budget. So we're going to put that back out to bid and try to solicit some more contractors and see if they can, you know, bring that number down and get it into, within a budget we can afford. As you can only imagine, we've been working diligently to close out this year's fiscal year, the town budget. We have a freeze in place for all department heads. So we try not to have much of an overdraft at the end of the year, but we will have an overdraft this year because we budgeted so tight last year. We're presently reviewing applications for the Public Works Director, Fire Marshal, Building Official. We didn't really get anybody that was certified, so that will be going back out. And hopefully we get some candidates that, or at least have the certification. A few people that did apply are in school trying to obtain their certification, but that would mean they didn't have any hands down experience. So we're putting that back out. Early voting, looks like the governor's going to sign that at the state level, it passed the Senate. So that might be in place for next year. So that'll put a little bit of a burden on the town clerk's office along with the register of voters. So we're going to have to keep an eye on that. The fire truck squad 310 that had the blown engine is back and running and in service. That was a quick turnaround time. I'm not sure if the Board of Selectmen was even aware we had an issue like that. They took care of it immediately, so I apologize in my, on my vacation that that wasn't reported. Parks and Rec, the summer adventure camps are full. We normally have 65 kids. They're going to open it up to 80 kids, so that's a good sign. That's, that's full and that's looking good. And I already did reports on the farmer's market. And then prior to liaison reports, the roof project at the library continues to move forward. The work at the senior center or senior housing, I'm sorry, continues to move forward, those projects. And then we are doing a punch list on the sewer upgrades that should be done and be closing out shortly. And that's all I have.
Okay, beautiful. Thank you. Our next would be our American Rescue Plan approval. And we're going to be doing another workshop. So what are, what have we gotten for feedback on that?
Well, I think that's why it's posted here. I think the responses back were for the 28th or 29th. Donna, I don't know which one was better than the other or?
I'm sorry, I think the, from those that we heard from either of those two dates would work.
Okay. Donna, this, this is Peter. I've had a work, travel conflict. The 28th is not going to be very good for me, won't be good for me. So if, if it doesn't matter, I, I can make the 29th, the 28th would be a challenge.
Mark?
I guess Peter, the, the 28th is better for me, but if you can't make it till the 29th, that, that's fine too. This, we're doing this Zoom, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah. You know, Mark, I might be able to, and I have a dinner, a staff meeting, a dinner meeting in Massachusetts. I might be able to sort of wrap it up by like a seven o'clock, you know, I might be able to. But I'm not 100% sure of everyone's flights and arrival times yet. So I, I have to sort of leave it open because it's actually my dinner. So I, I, I might be able to do it if it, if the 28th really is best for you. So it's just, or?
No, you know what? I'll make it the 29th, we'll do it the 29th.
Change your mind, I can, I can figure something out. It's just all of a sudden I have this new commitment that came to surface this week, so.
Okay, I'll, I'll make sure I can make it either day. So whatever works for you, Pete and everybody else, I'll, I'll make sure I make it those days.
I was going to say, just for scheduling purposes, let's set it up for the 29th. That way, everybody has, has the chance to actually plan for that. Yeah, I think it'd just be better. That way we have, otherwise we're already beginning in the month. And to have the could be either day type deal. This way, if we just bank for the 29th, that way staff, everything can plan for that. Our next would be the is there any other updates on the ARPA funds, Andy?
I think we could discuss those on the 29th, but the one thing that did come up is we got some new engineering cost estimates for the expansion of the Company One Fire Station Ambulance Bay. They, they want to go out and mark another 10 feet. Structurally, that seems to work better. And secondly, they need some structural fill underneath to support the addition. So that's going to increase the cost. So they've sent us an updated estimate for that.
I guess we'll discuss it on the 29th, but how locked into the, yeah, yeah. How locked into this project are we? If all of a sudden it gets to the point where financially it doesn't make sense, I, I don't know what, you know, to say, I mean, we're already what, 60,000 over?
Well, I think by the time we add in what their additional costs would be, originally came in around 100,000, I think we added 28,000 and I think in there looking for another 30 to 38,000. So I agree, we're not locked into anything at this point. We can walk away, but we, we still wouldn't have the project. But other than that, I don't think we have any commitment.
What would be the drop dead date on that? Do we have any?
Well, they, they would wait for our approval, so it would be up to us. I think it could wait till after that meeting. I got a meeting with the building committee or at least one of the people from the building committee on Monday morning. So we could discuss it there as well.
Okay. Yeah, because I say we're, we're almost double the cost, you know, and we haven't even broken ground yet. We're almost double the cost.
Yep, I agree.
Hi Tiffany. Yeah, Peter.
I don't know that we need to address this. I hate to give it any credibility, but those signs that were posted during the last referendum associated accusing us of squandering all the ARPA funds for the pet projects. I mean, do we just sort of ignore that? Because it's lunacy, but people read them. And I don't know if we have to do something. If you're suggesting that I approve pet projects that support our children, our schools, our fire police, our parks, then guilty as charged. And everything was, you know, approved and all that. So the misinformation, I'm uncomfortable that we just let people, and we know who did it, but we let people post signs, you know, look public, you know, like printed signs, not just, you know, someone scrolling something that accused us of something that, you know, I guess from a legal perspective, you could, you could say it's an opinion, but nonetheless, it can sway public opinion inaccurately and shed, you know, negative light on the board. And we spend enough time defending ourselves against a few people that, anyway. So do we, should we be, how, how do we just ignore it? You know, it's sort of, I just wanted to bring it up before the workshops and so, you know.
I, I completely totally agree with you. I just don't know how do you fight that type of misinformation? I mean, there are people out there in this town that are doing everything in their power to, they want the boards and commissions to fail, they want town staff to fail. For whatever reasons, they've got a grudge against anything that's done in Hebron. It is what it appears. And, yep. I, I don't know.
I don't know, maybe we have to, I mean, we ought to stay above the fray. I mean, because obviously that's done by somebody who's, you know, has, has a very suspect agenda for sure and clearly is comfortable spreading misinformation. However, I, I don't want to ignore it, but is there, obviously maybe it warrants at least us publishing something that reminds the public that everything was approved by the town attorney method definition of ARPA. And obviously we've addressed a number of things that clearly benefit the community. And I'm hard pressed to find anything that would suggest that we're squandering anything. And, but, you know, I don't want to be too sensitive, but I'm also concerned that people believe it and it's not true. Or at least that's my opinion. So if we can at least, maybe during the workshop, think about, you know, is there a better way to communicate the thought process behind it, you know, the reminding people the approval process and sort of the vision that we had. Maybe it's an opportunity that we could at least, I can ask our fellow board members to think about prior to the workshop because, you know, we want to continue to support this great opportunity for our community and also bring light to the process so that misinformation just dies sort of a natural death and goes, you know, people sort of ignore it if they have the facts or at least more information. So maybe if I can ask the, my fellow board members, at least think about not, you know, being silent on it. Maybe an opportunity to improve how we communicate what we're doing and why. It just might be an opportunity to silence some of that ridiculous rhetoric.
Yeah. I mean, at, at this point, I seem to be the load person out there trying to dispel a lot of half truths and all. I would love somebody else to step forward and say, no, this is not.
So maybe we can just talk about it as a group and maybe, again, I, I'm not looking to pick a fight with somebody who's not willing to listen because that's sort of a waste of my time. But nonetheless, if we're all comfortable not providing additional information or we think we provided enough information, I mean, see, if you go to the meetings, you sort of would understand, you'd understand the process and be comfortable. But, you know, a lot of the criticism we do get is not from people who choose to be informed. They just choose to make statements. And so maybe we can just think about it. I think we spent a lot of time being really thoughtful and sure an individual item here or there, somebody could disagree with, but I clearly am comfortable that I was not with any misintent or would fall under any sort of even vague definition of squandering. So maybe just, I'll just leave it here and something that we can think about as a component. Thank you.
Okay. That was under the old business Tiffany, the American Rescue Plan State and Local Recovery Funds update. So what we were talking about was the Company One addition on the ambulance bay. At this point, we had originally put $100,000 towards that. They're requesting a, a different type of fill where the foundation would be going, some other things. So right now it's up to approximately the 160, maybe even 170 range if we go forward with that. And we haven't even broken ground yet. So that's, that's what started that whole talk when you came in. So. I don't know if, do we want to go back, finish the old business or go back to the proclamation? I don't care.
I would go back to the proclamation, then we're at least a little more current on the agenda now that Tiffany's here.
Okay.
And just, Dan, it's Donna, just for Tiffany's info, we set that workshop for Thursday, June 29.
Just my opinion, to go back, do whatever you want. I, you were asking for opinion, that's my opinion. I'm the only one who said anything, but if you want Tiffany, if you want to do it later, Mark, Dan, I just, that was just my opinion.
No.
Don't feel like you have to go back.
Get this, try to get this thing done.
Okay, yeah, happy. And thank you for waiting on this for me. I had, you know, something unexpected come up that I had to take care of this evening, so I appreciate it. Um, so it's June 1st, so it's actually the first official day of Pride Month. We did this proclamation last year and I think it's particularly important to do it again this year in light of the fear that many in the LGBTQ community are feeling right now, the threats that they are under in particular places depending on laws that are being passed. And so I thought this was again, a really good opportunity for the town to reiterate its commitment to the values of diversity and inclusion and acceptance. I do want to say that I did not write this. This was written by Claudia Riley, who's an accomplished development professional, longtime resident in town. And so I want to thank her for helping me out with presenting this to all of you. So shall I read it or?
Yes, please. Now, this is not the proclamation of last year.
Correct, this is, no, this is a different one. This is copy that was somewhat taken from last year, but new copy kind of added in. That's, was recommended by the person who wrote this. So I'll begin, I'll just read it. Whereas the town of Hebron recognizes June as Pride Month commemorating the historic Stonewall riots of 1969, which sparked the modern LGBTQ plus civil rights movement. And whereas Pride Month serves as an opportunity to celebrate the contributions and achievements of lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender and queer questioning LGBTQ plus individuals in our community and beyond. And whereas the town of Hebron recognizes and values the diversity of its residents, promoting inclusivity, equality and respect for all individuals. And whereas by acknowledging Pride Month, we affirm our commitment to fostering a welcoming and supportive town free from discrimination and prejudice where all of our residents can live, work and thrive. And whereas promoting and celebrating equality for our town's LGBTQ individuals helps create a more vibrant and inclusive community that benefits all of us. Now, therefore, it is proclaimed that the town of Hebron officially recognizes and declares the month of June as Pride Month. We commend the efforts of local LGBTQ plus organizations, activists, allies and community members who work tirelessly to advance the rights and well-being of LGBTQ plus individuals in our town. Their dedication and advocacy contribute to the vibrant tapestry of our community. Let us celebrate Pride Month with joy and unity reflecting on the progress made and continuing our work towards a future where everyone can live authentically and with dignity, regardless of their sexual orientation or gender identity. We stand in solidarity with the LGBTQ plus community. And witness thereof, the Hebron Board of Selectmen hereby are hands and cause the seal of the town of Hebron to be affixed this first day of June, 2023.
Is there a discussion? I guess it's just me. I, my biggest issue, and I, the same as last year. I want to see proclamations that bring this country together as one. And these, these proclamations, I think sometimes create more issues than they, they fix. You know. It, it's decisive. We need to do stuff that brings us together as a nation. And I'm not sure this proclamation does that. Uh, it's basically the same as I said last year. I have relatives that are gay. I have relatives that are lesbians and I have the people we've done work for and I broke bread with them and they're great people. And some of them would like this, this proclamation and other ones think that it puts them in a spotlight and they don't want to be in a spotlight. They just want to live their lives like normal people, like everybody else wants to live their lives. So as I say, I'm right, I, I, I just, I don't want to create more animosity trying to fix one problem, creating another. And that's, that's, that's my problem. You know, trying to balance out, you know, this proclamation with, is it helping our country to come back together? It, it's that simple. You know, I've never, you know, I've been around, you know, going on 69 years. I have never seen our country more divided on more issues across the board. And it hurts. And I, I know I get passionate about things and sadly, I do not have the gift of knowing all the proper, correct words. You know, and, and sometimes my passion comes out too strong and I apologize. But I love this town. I love this country and I want to make sure that things we do are helping to unite, not helping to, to spread apart. That's again, not the proper words, but. Anybody else? Debbie.
I have a, I have a couple of comments.
Well, Mark, I'll go, I'll go after you. Thanks.
Good.
I, I don't think there's any harm including anybody who historically and contemporarily struggles to be a part of society, who is found to be socially unacceptable, is found to not fit into the norms. And we create a society where they feel like they don't belong. I want everybody to feel like they belong, whether you be black, have a religion that doesn't conform with others, whether you're gay, whatever it is that we haven't included you as mainstream society. Um, I don't think there's any harm, particularly in just a proclamation in saying that we see you, we, we want to assist you and feeling like you're part of the community. So I, I, I'm in support of this. I, I'm, I'm in support of anybody that feels downtrodden. So I, I gotta be a proponent of this proclamation.
Okay. Pete, please.
Yeah, I'm with Mark. I actually fully support it and appreciate the, the words and the and, and the message that we're sending to such a large group of people that they need to hear from the community that we value as its noted value, acceptance, diversity, and inclusion. And so I think, you know, I don't think we can make proclamations on everything. This one I fully support and I, I appreciate it and I would vote in favor of this without hesitation. Thank you.
Okay. As I say, I just, I mean, I, I I just, there's, oh, there's just so many other groups. I mean, I look at the American Indian and I've actually known American Indians. And, uh, you know, I know, I know their group. There's still, there are still treaties at, on the federal level that our Congress and Senate have never taken up to, to ratify with different Indian nations. You know, and the last Indian wars were, I'm not even sure how many, you know, 150 years ago at least. Yeah. As I say, my first inclination was, was not to vote for this. On hearing what my, my other two members have said, I guess I will support it, but I want it noted that I feel we need to include all groups. All groups. And not just this, these groups, but all groups. We are all American. And we need to realize that we are all Americans. And I don't care that skin, I don't care about any of that stuff. You know. We are the greatest country in the world. I mean, we have the ability to say, I have the ability here to say what I'm saying now. Whereas other countries, there could be a knock at the door and my screen may be blank. So as I say, taking a vote. Peter?
Well, actually, if I may, Tiffany, did you want to add any comments or not?
Yes, I'm sorry.
No, just in case, because I, I don't know.
I don't understand. I, I think again, I'll just, I'll just go back to, to points I made last year. I mean, proclamations such as these are, the intent is not to divide. The intent is to let people know that they belong here, that they are included here. And given the extreme threats and laws being passed across the country that seek to erase individuals in this community that seek to empower people to be hateful and violent simply because of their orientation or identity. Given that this town espouses that we are welcoming, we are supportive. This, to me, seems like a natural thing we should do. And to your point, Mr. Chair about, Chairman about different groups, I would welcome other proclamations honoring and supporting different groups of individuals that reside in town. And I will also say that, you know, every president of the United States, as long as I can remember, has done a proclamation for Pride Month as long as it's existed and that crosses both parties. So I introduced the proclamation, so I'm fully in support and I agree with my fellow selectmen. Thank you.
Okay.
Well, Dana, I have one more thing to say.
Yes, sir.
I think this is just an example of how you're civil and reasonable with each other. And that, that's the beauty of you, Dan. It, it, it's obviously, it's obvious you're a little uncomfortable with this. And I know your heart and I agree with Tiffany that let's just include everybody that, that, that feels that they need a voice, that they're not fairly represented or treated. But, but the beauty of you is you listen to us and it altered how you think. And, you know, I appreciate that and admire that. I know we all don't always agree on everything. But this is an example between the four of us of how government should work. So I just wanted to make that comment.
Thank you. Uh, okay. Peter.
Your guest, Ryan.
Tiffany.
Tiffany Tealy, aye.
Mark.
Mark Perbera, aye.
And myself, aye, with, as I say, that my the statements of my concerns. Thank you. Our next would be the getting back online here, the Public Works Building Project Survey Committee Update.
Yeah, sorry. I don't remember what this is all about. Uh, that's, that's my drive sense of humor. All right. So where we are with the update is, um, we, everyone should have received a clean version. So thank you, Donna and Dory, whoever was working on both on that item. Updating the survey based on feedback that was received and making some, making some changes. And so I don't necessarily want to summarize all those you have those. So, and you've seen those. You want, is there anything you wish to discuss? Because I know we've, we've covered this a number of times, so I'm not looking to take up a huge amount of time. But we're in a position where we're presenting it to the board in, in a format in which we're ready to move forward to gather the information, feedback from the public, try to take the next step in this, in this, what will be a long process of information gathering and assessment and communication. But again, we took feedback from the last meeting, from the public. We altered some of the language to, to address some of the concerns. We included the document from, just as a summary quickly, from the Green Committee, to again, give additional points of reference to the public. Uh, and so that's all in here. Uh, I'm assuming you got a chance to look at it, so don't want to rush through it. But we're at the stage now where it's being presented to the board for their review and a vote as to whether or not we are in a position to move forward. So I'll sort of go at the pleasure of, of my fellow board members. Uh, if they wish to discuss any element of it more specifically, or there was still any potential concerns. Again, like we raised in our last meeting where we went back then as a committee and addressed those. Obviously, I see Terry's on the line, so you know, he's here to comment as well or provide any any additional context if I can't or must add to what I'm saying now. But again, I don't want to necessarily take all your time to go through each item, but I'm, we're happy to. Uh, it's at the pleasure of the board where you want us to, to dig in. And you can see here that, you know, these, these links, just as a refresher, the links, the information. Well, the questions at this juncture were, yeah, the ideas, let's get some public feedback and go from there. But again, if there's any element of it that you're not comfortable with, or you want to talk about a particular question, or you want to go through each of them again, I'll go through all of them in detail. I'm happy to do any of that. So I turn to Mark, Tiffany and Dan, how do you wish for us to proceed, you know, you know, speaking obviously for Terry, because he's on the line as well as part of the committee, how do you wish us to proceed with any additional context or, or discussion around this process?
Mark or Tiffany?
Go ahead, Terry.
One thing, what Terry, you gotta give his opinion too, since he was on that committee or? What do you want to do?
Tell it to you, Terry, you can jump in. I just sort of, let's, let's see what I was thinking. Let's see what the, where the board sort of takes us, because this is not a new item. But by all means, Terry, jump in.
Peter, Peter, I think you summed it up. If there's any questions or I might be able to add something, I'll go ahead and do that, but uh, does the board slash, I want to put this forward, I guess is the question right now. Yeah, I think you explained everything.
Okay, yeah. So we're happy to slow it down. We're happy to go through each element of it, not looking to rush at all. But again, since it's been on the agenda for a bit and you've seen the document, the documents and we made changes and you've seen a couple of different versions. I mean, this at least is the third version. The original draft, last meetings, what we thought was a, a final draft. And then obviously with feedback, we went back and, and went at it again significantly on the committee side to, to make the revisions with our consultant. And we're happy to, you know, again, take it in whatever direction you wish in terms of slowing it down or moving it forward, or whatever you guys, whatever your pleasures at this juncture.
Uh, Tiffany or Mark?
Yeah, I have a question, if I may. Has there been discussion yet on the strategy around distribution? So I've read through, I like the changes that you've made to include the Green Committee's letter. And I think, again, from a purely communications perspective, I don't share the opinion of some in town that this is biased. I think this is pretty down the middle and neutral, which is where it needs to be. And that's in my expertise as a senior communications professional. That being said, are we waiting to discuss how we're going to strategically conduct the outreach of this survey? Has that come up yet? Or is that something you and your committee foresee as the next step once we approve the language of this?
Yeah, okay. Great question. So the, the consultant has gone through with us sort of all those elements which we are then going to bring forward once we are ready to move it forward. So then town with them, we would then coordinate it's going forward in the state. Here are all the different elements, you know, the written form, the social media, all the different things that are going to put this out that has been discussed and is ready to, to share. But that strategy is, you know, then we'll turn to the town to sort of share that strategy. Andy, did you have something?
No, I'm sorry. No.
Oh, I saw your light. I just looked over and saw the green. I didn't know if you were trying to jump in. So yes, Tiffany, and that's the consultant. We've discussed it as a committee with a consultant. And we're comfortable that he has sort of addressed all the different elements to make sure it has the broadest outreach. And we can clearly bring that forward as a summary document to uh, the board through the town saying, okay, this is, these are the next steps. But yes, that has been discussed because that was our concern is how, how do we get the most reaction? How do we get the most participation? Well, the most participation is we make it available in every single way possible that people would react to it from the written form to the picking up at the town hall, to all the social media outlets to, you know, everything that we could possibly think of. Get as broader reach as possible. So we can send that out. I don't have it in front of me, but we can obviously send it out. But yes, it's been discussed. And it will be part of the next step. Here are the dates, here's the launch, and here's the communication strategy associated with it.
Great, thank you.
Uh, Mark?
There, there's a time when you shouldn't have an opinion. And I'm deferring to Pete and Tiffany on this because I'm not an expert and I couldn't even be educated in my opinion. So if Tiffany, who's a professional thinks that this is fair and unbiased and well done, then I'm supporting that. And Pete, anything that you're the chair of with the integrity and reasonableness that you have, I'm, I'm in support of this without opinion.
My, my concerns and, and, you know, a perfect example. And, and I, I don't even know how to address it. I mean, you're, you're putting a lot of information in the packets. There's information on the websites. But another perfect example is we have the letter from the Green Committee. Uh, we then have letters, we rebuttal. I'm trying to think of the proper word. A mind is a terrible thing, so I didn't get one. Rebutting what they, you know, what they said is the findings. And one of the things they're talking about a water quality test on the state level. Well, that has nothing to do with, with the building project, A, and B, we are not, not in compliance. You know, so I, I, I don't, it seems like every time we have someone comes up and claims an issue, our people, you know, the, the, the experts that, you know, whether it be on the state level or, you know, the people that we have hired come up with a, with a rebuttal. Is, how is all that information going to get uh, put out there or, or, I mean.
Well, I will tell you that I did, I did speak to the chair of the Green Committee. We spent quite a bit of time talking through uh, the issues associated with, you know, is it, is, are you comfortable with your, your statements? Are you comfortable to research? Because there was some differences of opinion or some different, you know, perspectives, as you're saying. Um, and so as you said, I asked them, you know, is there anything that you would change with that additional information? And, and the perspective of the Green Committee was, other than there was a verbiage change that we shared with you, but they were very comfortable that the information that they provided is, is factual. Now, again, I, it's, I'm not, I don't, I don't have the expertise to decide whether it is or isn't. It's a reference point. It's an additional piece of information. It gives, I think, some support to the idea that we're trying to be unbiased. And this is the town uh, committee who wants to provide a position on, on something that does impact the environment from their perspective, which is one of their charges. And so it's, it's a point of reference. It's a piece of information that they stand by. So I, I have no issue with it. I think it does support the idea that it's, we're trying to be as unbiased as possible now. Um, obviously, if, if, if there's questions that come from that, I mean, we can react to that. This is the, this is a step, a continued step on the journey, Dan. So I think we'll get a whole bunch of feedback and questions and people like this or that. And we're going to continue the process. And then when we bring forward to the public more information, clearly there could be another opportunity to provide some additional context. This one is a real clear example. We might want to provide some additional information from uh, the town or the architects or engineers. So I'm sure there'll be other things as well that will. Uh, the town or the architects or engineers, so I'm sure there'll be other things as well that will, uh, cause us to wanna provide some additional clarity, uh, or follow up. So I think where I am is. And this has been going on, obviously, as a, a, a long time, and we're not making a decision, we're gathering information. And so I believe that we really need to move forward to get some public input. It's clearly just one step in this marathon that we're running, uh, relative to the, you know, the identification of the problem and hopefully ultimately opening up a, a new facility. I mean, there's a long way to go, as I think Terry mentioned, uh, in his opening comments in terms of the journey that we're on. So I, uh, I understand, uh, the concern, I think there might be other elements of it, once it goes out that, you know, could come to light that we're just not anticipating. But the most important thing for me is that we're getting some public feedback in general, cause that's one thing that's been missing. We've had a few individuals, we've obviously a lot of missing information, I wanna hear from hundreds of people. And then from there, we'll sort of stir it all up and then come back and say, okay, here are our challenges, here's, they were distracted by theirs, or this is an issue or. And then we're back to the board with the findings to say, okay, now here's some clarity as to not only direction, but maybe. Some clarity relative to the points that might have been confusing or need some additional information put out. So I, I understand completely. But my, my bias is we need to move forward to gather public opinion. And as the next step in the long process that continues to be the DPW project. I appreciate comments, but I, that's where I am, I think we need, I think we need to move forward.
And I, and I agree, I just wanna make sure of it as I.
Yeah, I, I'm with you. Again, and, and again, the town, I mean, the idea is to bring information out. So if as part of this, we need to bring more information out, maybe we've opened up, uh, the communication channel with our constituents. And our taxpayers to say, listen, we're, we're listening, we're exchanging ideas, um, you're open to more information, you know now where to get it. You're engaged, you're not just reading signs on the side of the road, you're actually engaged in this process, because it's your tax dollars, it's your town, it's your community, it's your infrastructure. And you've got questions, great, you know, instead of having fifteen people at a meeting total, maybe we'll have thirty or forty as this moves forward and we'll. Continue to gather that information. And so I think it's just sending a message to the town that, okay, we're listening, let's start the process of making you feel like we're listening. And not that we weren't intentionally, but we do need to sort of reach out and, and make it clear that, uh, at some point, we want to hear from them, even if it's not perfect. That's, that's where I'm, I think, I think we need to.
Yeah, and as I said, and, and what I'm, what I was referring to is this letter from, uh, a Mr. Campbell. And I'm not pos- I, I, I know he is, he is an engineer. Trying to find out if he's with the state or just exactly where, but you know, um. Yeah, we need to move this forward and we need to make sure that, you know, facts are out there. It, it's just time, because it's, it's, it's getting to the point, we have to do something. You know, I, I, you know, we're talking with Andy, I'm not sure when, uh, but he was commenting, this has been thirteen years. In, in process now, it's gotta come to an end, we've got buildings that are. I wanna say, um, sixty plus years old. That were never designed for the length of time that we're actually using them. And, and we've had changes of bridge laws and, and, uh, building codes and, um. Our buildings are antique and we, we need to move forward with a project somewhere, uh, sooner than later. So. I think everybody's in, in favor of, of this moving forward, correct? I don't think we need any kind of a motion. Are you looking for a motion or just a green light to proceed?
I guess I'll ask Andy, do we need a motion? I don't know the answer.
I, I would think that the Board of Circuit would wanna approve the final draft of this before it goes to the public, I would suggest a motion.
Okay. Make a motion that, uh, we approve the final draft. Of the Hebron DPW building project survey. And that, that survey, uh, be prepared and put out for public. Comment, public, um.
Public response, right? Cause the public's gonna respond to it.
Participation, yeah.
For public response, uh. How, is there anything else we think, you know, Tiffany or Mark or Pete, or anything else you think we need in this?
We'd just say as, as defined, as defined by the recommendation or consultant, relative to timing and communication.
Okay.
We wanna follow, we wanna follow a script on this, um, and so we could add that, that would be great.
So we'll, we'll just, I'll just, uh, use that as a friendly amendment to the, or addition to the, the motion. Uh, all in favor, signify by saying aye, Peter?
Jasper, aye.
Uh, Tiffany?
Tiffany Tealy, aye.
Uh, Mark?
Mark Rivera, aye.
And myself, aye. Okay, thank you. Our next thing would be our budget update to two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four, uh, Andy? And I also know we had Diane Del Rosso on, I'm not sure.
Sure. I can, I can jump in quickly and give you some numbers and, uh. Donna was, uh, so gracious to supply that normal calculation on taxes, but. Attaches, uh, the certification of the vote on May twenty-third, two thousand twenty-three referendum vote. Also attaches proposed budget for the June thirteenth, two thousand twenty-three referendum as recommended by the Board of Finance. At their meeting on May twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-three. The Board of Finance has reduced the town government budget by fifty thousand dollars. And restored one hundred thousand to the Hebron Board of Education budget for a total recommendation budget of thirty-nine million, one hundred and fifteen thousand, two hundred and three dollars. With a thirty-three point five four proposed mill rate. So that mill rate would, with the changes they made, I think bumps. What we proposed at the last referendum by one point eight four mills, that's, it's increasing. The mill rate from the last vote to the one that we're gonna have by one point eight four. The last one would have been thirty-three point four eight, this one's at thirty-three point five four.
So what does that actually work out to a mill rate increase? What, what? How many mills?
Well, it's up point, um. It's up from the one point seven eight, it's a one point eight four mil increase to, yeah. So it's under two, but it's a one point eight four increase.
Okay. I mean, it is what it is, um. I know last year we cut out of, out of public works, uh. I forgot exactly how much.
Fifty thousand.
And now this year. We've already, you know.
So this year, we took, well, last year to get the budget after the, the reduction of the fifty thousand, the budget passed. We took twenty-five thousand from the road program and we took twenty-five thousand from the winter program. And luckily, we didn't have a harsh winter, uh, but it was twenty-five thousand dollars less in road work. Most recently, because our budget is going to run into the red, we had put a freeze on it in May. And we took an additional fifty thousand dollars, not just from. Public works, but to, for your, your point, another fifty thousand, so he's down seventy-five thousand for this year. And with that being the largest budget, there's a lot of options we could probably look at, we probably couldn't get the whole fifty. Out of one, one entity, but I'm sure the public works would not go on, on untouched, I think we'd have to look at. You know, maybe winter materials again and take a gamble or possibly cut some monies, uh, from the roads, but there's other suggestions. We could use as well, just to give an update.
Okay, uh, now this is something we do not need to make any decisions on tonight, correct?
No, well, the fifty dot, dot cut is what it is, that may, that may, if the budget fails, God forbid, you might need to make more. So normally, we don't make it till after you have an approved budget, then we decide where, where it should come from.
Okay, you know, because, um. I will not. I will not be in favor of cutting any of the public safety, uh. Monies, um, that are gonna directly impact, you know, public safety, um. Our roads, you know, there are other areas that we're gonna have to look at that, you know, a lot of people don't realize. All of the different mandates that the state has imposed on communities of, of positions, things that you have to do. So, you know, I'm, I'm thinking that we're fairly limited in areas that we can cut. Uh, and of course. Trying to find areas that are gonna have the least amount of impact on the general public. So, you know. If the budget does pass, you know, I've already talked and, and, um, come up with at least some money. That we can. You know, cut, but, um. You know, just throwing it out there, there's a very little, you know, there is some with parks are wrecked, but a lot of parks are wrecked. Uh, programs are self-funded, not funded with town monies. You know, there's some potential maybe with, uh, library overtime, uh, the recycling center. I mean, these are areas that are not mandated, that we may be able to grab some, some pennies from here and there. So, not that we have to make the decision tonight, but, you know, start kind of thinking. As I say, what, what do you feel is gonna have the least impact on the voters, on, on, you know, the taxpayers? You know, things that are nice to have, that, you know, we may have to. You know, pull a few funds out of. It, it's just sad, I'm, I'm, I'm just very upset, we, we. Don't have really any fluff, nor have we had fluff in our budget for a number of years. And with price increases, the way price increases are, um. They affect towns the same as they affect, you know, people's personal homes, um. And we gotta pay our bills and we gotta provide the, the safety net for our community. Anybody have any other comments before I continue randomly?
I do. Particularly, this budget process has been disconcerting to me. Worse than the others and for a variety of reasons. I, I think the, the discourse has devolved into right self against wrong others. My interests are more important than your interests. If, if there's one thing that I've learned, being a selectman and a policeman for forty-two years is, uh, people's self-interests. Very often don't include what those do to others, and I think that's happened here. When, when do we get to the point where we come back to what our charge is? And our charge is to create quality services at an affordable price. And if we're spending seventy-three percent of taxpayer money in the budget on education. How does that come in at a quality price? And for someone who stood in front of Hebron Al for six years, being screamed at, yelled at, have stuff thrown at me, jumped out of the way of cars. To try to make the place safe, I think I have a right to say something about it. And say something about it in terms of what's good and bad. With that happening, I also had parents and students coming up to me, giving me crispin pres- presents, thanking me, uh. How important it is to have you here, but what has happened to those days? Where we tried to do things and we balance things, we don't balance things anymore, and we don't provide the right facts either. So when we throw a motion into something and the motion isn't even true, that's even more debilitating, like saying, we're gonna lose a fourth grade teacher. Well, the administrative staff all has raises, as I understand this, and it's kind of ob- obfuscation in their budget. From eight to twenty percent. How, how is that not obscene to people? How can the superintendent put in a fifteen thousand dollar raise for himself and another twenty thousand for another administrator? And then have the gall to say, well, we have to cut a fourth grade teacher, well, well, don't get that raise then. We all make tough decisions, there's trade-offs to be made. The superintendent in the city of Hartford makes two hundred and sixty thousand dollars and has seventeen thousand kids and thirty-seven schools. And we're gonna pay our superintendent two hundred thousand. Money does not make quality. So that, that's disturbing to me, it's disturbing how that doesn't get into the discourse. We've gone away from our charge again, we have quality of education, but how about at an affordable price? And to shame the Board of Finance, to try to shame Boards of Selectmen into acting like you don't care. Well, our charge is a little different, we have everybody's interest, not just one interest, seniors, public safety, um. Using kids to come to a meeting as pawns, as a mouthpiece to express your emotion is distasteful to me. How would you like it if I brought victims of crime to say how bad it is here and make you feel shame? And to say, and we need, need more police, or if I bought EMS people here to say, hey, w- w- we narcanged your children, we went to. Uh, accident scenes and saved people in accidents and said, this is what we need. What, I would never do that. And I found that offensive and to speak the truth. And to be shamed or demeaned or attacked for that is not right. So I wanted to interject into this into the budget, I was yes for all the budgets. But it's gotten to a point where it, it hasn't become a productive discourse. And I, I, I'm ki- I'm, I'm kind of offended about that, maybe some of my comments might offend some people. But I think I have a right to say, say these things, just like you do, and you could say the things that you wanna say. And we listen, we as a board listen, the Board of Finance listens, they're, they're not a one interest representative. So I, I, I'm, I'm disturbed about this in, in such a way that people are so. Not, not, not just disingenuous to each other, but, but there's animosity towards people. A- a- and I'm to the point where I'm almost glad I'm gonna be done with this. And I, I, I tried to do the best I could, and I think the board tried to do the best they could. And the Board of Finance is full of people with great hearts who put their own children through this school system. And to be attacked when you're a volunteer or, or shamed in social media, that's distasteful and you may have a right to do it, but it's not right. That, that concludes my little comment.
Thank you. Okay, well.
Mr. Aaron, I, I just, I just wanna acknowledge Mark's comments, um, and not to repeat them, just to. When we have a member of our community who selflessly given years to this community feel that way, something's wrong. And it's not like, you, you know, Mark's a police officer, so my guess, Mark, is your, your skin's a lot thicker than mine. And, and he, he brings up a point that we can't necessarily solve, but today's, um, world has made it very difficult to. Be, uh, as constructive as we should be, we are one community, we are all volunteers that live in this community. So the idea that we're vilified, um, for trying to bring something forward, if you don't like it, um, come out to vote. If you like it, come out to vote. But I, I, a lot of the criticism we get, criticism we end up getting, I bet not all those people actually vote or went to meetings. And so engage and vote, the, the charge of the Board of Finance as, and I served on the Board of Finance, as you know, um, is to get a budget that passes. And we're, so we're bringing it forward, if you don't like it, no sweat, then vote against it, and then we'll try again. And then if you don't like it, vote against it, we'll try again, but we're not the problem, we're trying to be part of the solution. And the solution does mean that we have to do it at an affordable price, Mark is exactly right, the charge is twofold. A quality education at an affordable price, that's if you go to a seminar from, uh, the, the state, when you become, first become a member, that is your charge, it's twofold, it's not onefold. And there is nobody, because we've all put our children through this system, I have children, and I have five that have gone through the entire system. Uh, actually, four, one, God willing, has another year to go. Uh, actually, four, one, God willing, has another year to go, um, you know, from from elementary school all the way through. Um, all of us support a quality education, we're here, that's one of the main reasons, and so I budget time. To be told that we all of a sudden don't support education, but that's not true. That's not true, at least speaking for myself, and I've been accused in the past of not supporting education when I was on the Board of Finance, simply because. You know, we were suggesting that we should spend, or we should give them less of an increase, not less money. By cutting the budget, we're giving less of an increase, and so the better we can um do at getting the, you know, people to come out. And communicate constructively and to vote. I mean, our voting record is weak, vote. And and come out and be constructive, be part of the solution, not part of the problem. And that means we have to work together as boards, and and every time in budget season, I agree, the boards don't have a tendency to work together. It becomes like us versus them, and that should never happen, we have challenges. And so let's work together to address those challenges, um, as opposed to create divisiveness. And and then divisiveness then subsequently in the community, and then this feeling that, you know, the board isn't doing a good job, whether it's for finance, or selectmen, whatever it is. Need to work better together, this is a great example, and it's unfortunately. Um, one that, you know, the time that I served, it's sort of the same every single time. And with different boards or different superintendents, it's the same, and it's very frustrating. Um, but when somebody like Mark is that passionate about. The the what we have sort of evolved into, we should be listening as an opportunity to improve. The process for future boards, how do we improve the process? Uh, and how do we work better together, how do we use it as an inflection point? Because it shouldn't, it shouldn't do, we shouldn't be at the point we're at. Because what's lost is we all agree that we should have a phenomenal education for our children. But nobody disagrees with that, how we get there, and that's the journey, and that's why we pay people a lot of money to manage that. And so the charge of the superintendent is, you know, to be honest with you, you figure it out, I mean, that's your job. Is to figure out how to provide an awesome education with the dollars that you're given. And you have a great staff and you have great teachers, and we have confidence that you can figure it out. Um, but the fact that we've gotten to this point, um, yeah, it's sort of hard to feel good about being a volunteer. When that's what you're up against on a regular basis, so um, I just want to get behind Mark here, Mark, you're phenomenal for this community. And we don't always agree on everything, but what we can agree on is that we're better as a community with you in it. And so thank you for your comments.
Thank you. The other thing I would like to add is. We go through a budget process, we start. What, March? And or or February, March? And no one shows up. You know, we are supposed to somehow. Know what everybody's thinking, but nobody shows up, I I can't say that. You know, we had Mr. McManus, who was there pretty much every every meeting, but. It's usually the same, very, very few people. Uh, so we we we're doing our best, but we're working in a vacuum. And um, that's frustrating. It, and it's gotten more and more frustrating with every passing year, because. Everybody screams and yells at the end of the process, but, you know, we need input. We need participation. From the beginning of the process. Not after we we move something forward to the Board of Finance. Um. Anyway, we will see what happens on June. Thirteen.
Thirteen.
And uh.
We'll go back there.
Okay, uh. The resumption of in-person meetings.
Um, yes, that we were asked to put that on the agenda, so there it is.
Yep, um, I did discuss it with Gail, and again. Um. She just was unable to make it again tonight, I guess she's doing better, but. PT and stuff like that just destroy her. Um. She has statistics, because that's what Gail does. Which shows that we've had far more uh participation. Um, albeit not throughout the entire meeting, but people coming and going. Ever since we've done the virtual meetings. Uh, so she's saying our participation numbers are up. And she also said that the other advantages is that being Zoom. We've gotten a lot more younger people, because they don't have to try to pack the kids up to come out to a meeting. Uh, so we have that, we have the seniors who may not want to drive at night. Uh, who are able to attend meetings. As well as our meetings are not weather dependent, i.e. snow or or, you know, inclement weather. So that was her input, so I figured I'd just get that out there. Um, Tiffany?
Yeah, I'd like to weigh in on this, Mr. Chairman, um, I actually believe very strongly that we need to return to some form of in-person meeting. Um, I think we're an outlier in town, I mean, for. I'm, I mean, most boards that I know in town are back to meeting in person, except maybe open space, I think they are still virtual, um, but we are not, and we are. You know what, a top volunteer board in town making decisions that. Lay the foundation for um, you know, for administration, for day to day. For the day to day operations that we do, um, I do agree that online meetings afford the opportunity for more people to become involved and to listen. So I don't want to lose that, and so I guess my question would be, well, you know, first and foremost, I fully support in-person meetings. Because I do think there's something to be said to seeing your elected officials in person, um. I want to hold space for Mark sharing how he felt um in the previous item. Um, because I think that's important, and I think that. Those feelings are valid, and certainly I felt that way as a volunteer as well. Um, but I think there was a certain element of power to have that many community members attend a Board of Finance meeting. Um, and share their concerns, um, it's something that we're looking for, and I think that there's. Value to that, especially if we want more people to become involved. So I think that leads to my question of where we are in terms of hybrid compatibility, I know that we've set aside some ARPA funds. To set that up, and so I'm wondering. Would it be at all feasible for an in-person and hybrid combination? So where we're not losing people who want to engage with us in this format, but where we are in person. Where we are accessible, and I don't know the answer to that, so I would defer to the town manager on where we are with that equipment and software.
Uh, Andy, did you want to answer that?
I'll answer it, I'm not sure she's gonna like the answer. Um, you know, with everything that's been going on, I, just to be honest, we we haven't even dove into that project between. Uh, you know, the budget, uh, hiring all these departments, it's um. We uh turn, you know, turnover, uh, it's just the only people that would really be involved in doing it would be Donna and I, and now. We've just have not had the time to do that. Not that we can't start at some point, but I just, in in all honesty, we haven't started that process yet, we did talk a little bit with um. A novice, but as far as implementing or moving it forward, we haven't done it.
Yeah, thank you, um, Mark?
Um, uh, I I agree with the wise Gail Richmond. I can remember when I first came to meetings, you might be looking out at just Terry McManus or maybe two or three people, so. Um. I think we're more accessible this way, I think that what Gail said about. Families and travel and staying home to take care of your own self, but still being involved is important. Um, I I I wouldn't be opposed to having a hybrid of both. But I would be opposed to going back to just in-person meetings, uh, I think this has gone very well. I mean, where where else can you um sit sit and listen? To the same person week after week, say the same thing over and over again, where he probably wouldn't have driven there to do that in person, so. It affords the public um an opportunity to express themselves more to us. Um. So I I I'd like, I'd like to stay with it, and if we voted otherwise. If Gail does start to feel better, we'd be excluding her, so I'm not in favor of doing that at all.
Okay, go ahead, Peter.
Yeah, I like uh what Tiffany's saying and Mark as well in terms of creating that balance, we want to be as inclusive as possible. And so what I would suggest or recommend is that we um at least get on the agenda, and it has to take priority over all the things that the town is doing. But get on the agenda of determining the com- the the feasibility of creating a a hybrid environment with technology. Just the feasibility of, so at least understand, is it possible? And do the dollars we have ultimately assigned to it, is that something we can move forward on, so if we can, if I, if we can at least get it on the agenda. And then, you know, Andy can sort of tell us where, you know, what sort of how it will have to be prioritized, but I think. We need to have it surface and stay on the agenda, at least to ascertain the feasibility of it. And then we can sort of go from there, because if it's feasible and it's just timing or dollars, okay, if it's not feasible. Or whatever, then it's a different discussion, but I think we should consider adding it as an agenda item and then at least getting it in the queue, so. Thank you.
Okay. So, I I, well, at this point, I I would. Feel that uh we want to maintain the status quo for now. Um, once the budget's over with and some of these other things are off the plate, the FOIs and stuff like that. Uh, then they would probably or hopefully have some time to delve into that. Yes, Tiffany?
I just have one quick follow-up question, um, I do think, you know, hybrid is the way to go, um. I think, again, I reiterate, we still need to be in person as elected officials, but I had thought we had allocated ARPA funds to look into the feasibility. Of hybrid meetings, so perhaps that's something, as Pete said, we need to discuss at our ARPA workshop, because I could have sworn we did allocate some of those funds to do that.
Um. You know, it it, yeah.
To Chairman Andy, I think that's right, so Andy, you were looking away, Dan, but Andy was gonna add some. Comment on that, I think, if that's okay.
Yeah, yeah, no, I'm.
So, Mr. Chairman, Tiffany, she's she's correct, I. I I hope I didn't misspeak, we we just haven't had the time to do that with everything else that's going on, but there is money set aside for that, we. We did have initial conversations with Novus, but we haven't, you know, followed through with that, we have been busy with some of these other things, but we can. Uh, if you guys all agree, do what Peter said, put it out on the agenda, and we can get some information and see what that looks like. And start working on this, but uh, as I stated before, we've been in budget, and normally we've have a budget approved by now. And it wouldn't be such a hindrance, but um.
Thirteen, thirteen, it's approved, come on, go.
Whatever the, whatever the selectmen uh direct us to do, we'll uh we'll put it on the list, put it on the agenda. But yes, there was money set aside for that.
My only con-. Yeah, my my only concern would be if it creates more work. For for Town Hall than they already have and takes them away for more pressing business, um. I I don't know, I wouldn't be in support of that, if it sets up some kind of system. Where we're paying somebody to do that without in infringing upon. The assets and resources that are already at the Town Hall, then it's a good idea, but if it's just spending money to to have them. Have more responsibility and take them away from more pressing matters, I I don't know if that's a good allocation of funds, so. So uh, Andy, I think you'd have to determine that for us.
Yeah, well, I think we can do both, we'll get our arms around it and see what we're looking at and bring that back. Yep, to the selectmen for their preview.
Uh, Tiffany, I just looked it up, I believe I found the the item and it was sixty six thousand.
Well, you know, again, that was something that the board voted on collectively to approve, and so I hear you, Mark, I mean, nobody wants to create extra work. Um, but if we approved those funds, then I personally would like to hear, you know, a plan, so thank you.
Yep, that was actually round one. It's, yeah, item sixteen, just in case. There is a reason why I keep all these papers on my desk, it's not just to see what my fire load can be. Okay, um. Any other old business? Hearing none, uh, new business? Um. Uh, Andy, anything on the new business?
No, the new business would be the draft agenda for June fifteenth. We will be putting the pollinator pathways request for the tree ceremony and resolution on that, on that agenda.
Okay, okay. Stay papers, um. Okay, uh.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Excuse me, I I wanted to add something to the new business, would it now for next meeting, would now be an appropriate time to mention that, or?
Sure, yeah.
I just wanted to sort of get back to. Mr. McManus's comments at the beginning of the meeting and sort of um picking back on the thirteen year history and and. What I'd be interested in is getting an update from from Andy, the town. Uh, to sort of make sure I I I have a better understanding of the issues that have been identified and raised. You know, from the town's perspective, um, and what we're doing about those issues. Um, what maybe as a board we have to think about, you know, in terms of the protection of our 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 workers and and the public and all that goes into that. But I I think I would be, I would like to at least get it on the agenda, um, to sort of hear hear from Andy in terms of, to make sure I'm totally comfortable with. At least the issues and then understanding, you know, what are we doing to address those issues, because reality is. Um, as been said before, uh, it's a long way between. The issues being solved with the new facility, even if we get moved forward at some point in the months ahead with the concept. You know, it'll be, you know, it'll be a long time before we're opening up a a new facility. Um, and I want to start understanding what challenges we might have ahead and things that we're gonna have to address, maybe between now and then. Um, that Andy may say, hey, they're addressed now, but in six months, we're gonna have a problem, or something like that, so if I could get an uh, if we, if I could suggest that we get an update from Andy. Um, and at least get that on the agenda, so we can start together, you know, talking through these issues, so uh. Also, he doesn't feel like alone in trying to figure them out, because this is, I think, a a board issue, as well as a town staff issue that we have to work together. Um, on these items, and and clearly, I I personally want to be better. Uh, informed as to what those potential challenges might be ahead of us, so we can start thinking through those, so if I may, does that make sense, I know it was a rambling. Um, Andy, does that make sense for what I'm trying, I'm asking for?
Uh, absolutely.
Okay, okay, great, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome. Uh, okay, our next would be the consent agenda, and these items would be, yeah, to be considered routine in nature, which uh. Excuse me, the board may uh need to discuss individually. And maybe uh. Voted on as a group, um, I think we need to separate, so we're gonna have to do. Uh, the approval of the May eighth special meeting workshop minutes, and then uh. After that, then we will do the May eighteenth regular meeting minutes. Um. So does anybody have anything on the? Um, May eighth minutes? Okay, I do, so, um, on the on the May eighth minutes. Item number four, ARPA project update and review. Uh, one, two, three, the fourth line down. Uh, it says, oh, go go back, back, back. Fun page, first page, I'm sorry. Uh, okay, item number four, the fourth line down, it says. To include an addition of uh twenty five thousand dollars for winter heating assistance. It should be a reduction of. And then the next one, which is two lines down from there. Uh, after uh window replacement at Town Hall. Again, it should be an, or it should not an, a reduction. Uh, instead of addition of six hundred for the um. Beautification of the Veterans Park, that was a. beautification of the veterans park. That was another reduction because we had gotten us a grant for that. And I think that was the only thing that really jumped out at me. Um. I think everything else is accurate. So with those two, um, amendments. All in favor of the minutes as amended of Monday, May eighth, two thousand twenty-three, please signify by saying aye. Uh, Peter?
Peter Casper, aye.
Tiffany?
Tiffany Tealy, aye.
Mark?
Mark Rivera, aye.
And myself, aye. Um, the May, or the May eighteenth minutes, um, seem to be okay. So I, I, as I say, I didn't notice any, anything else on that one. Uh, so with that all in favor of approving the May eighteenth, two thousand twenty-three minutes as posted, please signify by saying aye. Uh, Peter?
Peter Casper, aye.
Tiffany?
Tiffany Tealy, aye.
And myself, aye. Uh, and Mark?
Well, Mark, you almost forgot me, Dan. Mark Rivera, aye.
Oh, I didn't look up, that, yo. That's okay. At least I remember your name. I don't have to have little name tags under you. I wear name tags upside down, so I know who I am. Um, okay, next would be our, our liaison reports. Uh, Peter, you have anything?
Uh, I would did, I nothing for Parks and Rec and I would defer if she so chooses uh, my update from the Board of Finance to uh, the Chair of the Board of Finance, who is on the call. Uh, and so Diane, if you wish to make any comments regarding an update, anything you wish to mention, I, I would defer to you if it's the board allows that, since she's on the call.
Diane?
Is that okay with the board?
Yep, we hear you.
Thank you. I'll just give you um, an update of the Board of Finance meeting. Uh, that occurred last Thursday. Um, I read a statement of some factual information to open the meeting. There were uh, several parents and students and the, all of the Board of Education members as well as um, the Chairman of the Board of Selectmen um, in the audience, and it was an in-person meeting. Um, there had been fifty letters submitted that all of you were copied on in your uh, public email boxes. Um, that it, it, and most of them were saying much of the same thing, that they were um, instructed to vote no for the prior budgets and um, and then in the questions to um, answer that the Board of Education budget is too low, and they were told that the Board of Finance would increase the budget. And so they felt as though that was very ambiguous. They were upset um, that they felt as though um, you know, the information given to them was ambiguous at best. And so the questions, even though well-meaning, uh, created a lot of confusion, and now I understand why they're not included. And so, um, I know that uh, um, this was something that was suggested by the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Finance. Um, agreed that it was something that we thought would be useful. Uh, it's been hard sort of dealing with it. Everybody has their own opinion of what the results mean. So that was um, some of the information provided in letters as well as uh, not wanting additional cuts to the Board of Education. And then, of course, a lot of information on line item detail. Please don't cut the fourth grade teacher. Please don't um, cut band or other special um, special services provided and needed by students. Um, as you are all well aware, the Board of Finance's purview is not um, by line item. We worked very hard this year not to make any specific comments about any line item details. That's within the Board of Education's purview themselves. Um, we opened a motion um, to discuss the cuts um, that we thought we needed to make. And uh, then tabled it for public comment. After I closed down earlier public comment, the room was very emotional, a very emotionally charged uh, group of parents and students concerned about their favorite things being cut from um, their school. Um, I will give you my point of view that the majority of these comments should have been made directly to the Board of Education themselves because they're line item purview. And um, but they were acting on behalf of instructions by the Board of Ed to do what they did. So at the end of the day, we, after nearly two hours of public comment, um, we reopened the motion. We did add back a hundred thousand. I think the audience recognizes that they need more constituents to vote positively for this budget than just themselves. This was discussed uh, in the meeting. Um, no one is against education. The Board of Finance are five members with five votes, one, one each. As are all of the parents and the Board of Education members. Uh, Mark, like you, I voted yes. I very much appreciate your comments. The first budget would have been uh, provided a six percent increase to the Board of Ed. Um, that's a very healthy increase to their current funding. Um, and I'm concerned that my own concern is that, you know, like Mark said, you, we're we're seen as the people to fight against rather than to join with. This is a budget we need to get passed together and not be divisive. So at the end of the day, I do feel as though there was um, an effort to realize by the parents that they need to come together to make this work. And I think that they have heard different things. Um, but I do think that they're, they're working towards that. Um, and hopefully we'll see a budget that's passed. Um, and yeah, so that's it for me on that update. And that's basically why we added the hundred thousand back. It's because of the number of people in the audience saying, please don't cut, please add back. This was confusing, got rid of the questions. Um, and you, you know, other than Danny, not really anyone stood up to talk about um, not cutting the town budget. There are plenty of people that are, are um, saying that the town budget is too high. But uh, or um, and other people saying it's just right or too low. There's no one there other than, you know, the education supporters. So um, we felt as though we needed to give them an opportunity to get this, to get this passed with potentially, um, you know, a little bit more money than what the second referendum had in it. That's basically my update.
Thank you.
Thank you, Diane.
Mark, you're over there now.
Yeah, I, I just, I just want to thank Diane and um, Dan, I, I apologize for not being there to be supportive, to support you and the Board of Finance. Um, I feel bad about that. Um, I guess to give a hundred thousand dollars back just to get this budget passed is practical and I hope it does pass. It's still disturbing to me, the excessive raises between eight and twenty percent. I've never had more than three in my whole eighteen years here. When people complain about town hall raises, but nothing compared to that. So I, I, I still find that distasteful and I know you, it's you can't do the line by things, but it, it, it just seems that that's almost shameless to put in raises like that at a time like this. And nobody wants to talk about that, though.
Well, it, like I said, the comments should, from the parents should be directed to the Board of Education themselves to discuss, to, to discuss things like that. But instead, they were deflecting to, to the Board of Finance as the, as the problem, so.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, Mark, you have any liaison reports?
Oh, it's the most I've talked in a long time. I don't, I don't have any comments. I'm, I'm through for the evening.
Okay, uh, Tiffany?
Um, open space meet uh, next Wednesday, and they will have a booth at Hebron Day, which I knew was coming up. Um, I would suspect the Green Committee would as well. Um, that's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Okay, and as I say, the fire department really has no more corporation. Uh, they have a new entity that only meets a couple of times a year. Um, the Hebron Volunteer Fire Department Incorporated is a no longer entity. People are getting ready for opening up the Peter's House. Um, for both historic artifacts and all which they, they show every year, things that have been found, you know, during the reconstruction of the Peter's House. And then also, uh, the Juneteenth people will be also there uh, in the home. They've got apparently, um, I don't want to screw it up. Um, handmade quilts and some other things that they're showing. Uh, you know, the patchwork quilt type things, so that should be interesting. Um, and I, that's really all I've got. Um, you know, so we'll open it up for public comment.
I, I did put my name in for public comment, but I don't know.
Did, yes, okay, go ahead, Diane.
Okay, thank you. So, um, I want, I just wanted to mention on the Department of Public Works survey. And I'm sure you are uh, between Tiffany and Peter, working with the consultants. Um, you talked a lot about most participation, and I'm hoping that when you start this out, you will have a suggested um, target of the percentage of population that will participate from Hebron, so that we have a statistically meaningful um, group of people with, that gave results. And then my second comment is personally, thank you um, to everyone who supported me during that Board of Finance meeting and tonight with your comments, uh, Mark, um, very much appreciated. Was a very difficult night, for sure. Wasn't my proudest moment. Um, I would suggest that potentially the town might want to come up for um, you know, discuss how we have children in public meetings to protect their identities and not have them, their images show in public forums without permission or identifying them with names. So um, you know, certain things to be mindful of and uh, for those uh, listening who may have been offended, I am, I'm sorry um, for how that was initially handled. And the police were not called to um, for the children, but for the disorderly conduct of adults who were not being mindful of a formal, formal, um, um, board meeting. Thank you.
Uh, and Don, sign off. Uh, Mr. Chair, may I make a comment, please?
Uh, yes, sir.
Uh, Diane, I thought you did an excellent job the other night. It was an extremely tough situation. I thought the board was dynamic. It could have been a lot worse. And I think, I think the board handled themselves professionally and definitely. And I appreciate what you did. Mark? Mark, I heard what you said, and it reminded me of a board meeting I went to at the elementary school board, the first time they got pushed back from the uh, uh, Board of Finance a number of months ago. The dejection felt in that room was palpable, and it was just unbelievable. I, I felt a little bit of that with you right now, uh, and I just want to say to you. You're in a tough, you're all, all of you are in a tough situation. I'm in, I'm in an easy position. I can just pick around on the outside. But you guys are taking the brunt of a lot of heat. We are in a hard time. We are in a dynamic time. We're coming out of COVID. We lost a lot of our ability to talk, and it hurts. It hurts. It seems like everyone's taking offense. I just want to let all of you know, and, and the Board of Finance also, that I appreciate your efforts. That everything you're doing is adding up to solutions in the future. We, we will get through this. And I just want to say I appreciate y'all. Thanks, Doc.
Thank you.
And I have one, another public comment from Heather Summerer.
Okay, please.
Hi, I'm Heather Summerer. I live on Coats Farm Road. Um, I apologize for background. I'm in a hotel in Oklahoma. Um, I just wanted to say I was at the meeting last week and you know, there was not a parent there that didn't bring their children there, knowing exactly what they were doing. I think when you bring your children to a meeting like that, you expect them to have the exposure of to what this process looks like. And you want them to have the exposure to what this process looks like, like. And it was disappointing, I have to tell you. My children went through the Ram School System. They went through Gilead, Hebronel. My oldest daughter graduated from the high school. My youngest is a freshman. And I'm so disappointed with what I have seen. And I think people's issue is that they don't feel as if it's transparent. That budget got cut after the first referendum failed. That Board of Finance meeting happened so quickly. It was not posted, the agenda was not posted in the right timeframe that is called upon. And, you know, so it feels very secretive. It feels very, I think they feel attacked. I, you know, like, again, my kids aren't in that school, but I feel like they're attacked. And I think as a Board of Finance and as a Board of Selectmen, you should take a step, take a breath and think for a second on what the community is saying to you. I don't think you should have hurt feelings that people showed up for that meeting, for the Board of Finance meeting. You should be thankful that finally the community is saying, hold on, wait a second, we want our voices to be heard. Should they be voting all the time and have their voices matter all the time? Yes, it's not happening because they think that you guys are doing the right thing all the time. This was a signal that they're saying, hold on a minute. You're not representing the voice of the community. Thank you.
Other public comment? Okay, hearing none. Uh, we do have an anticipated executive session for a legislation, legislative update or legislation update. Uh, so at this point, we will be suspending the uh, meeting, so we can go into executive session. Um, Andy, who do we, uh, we are be inviting in? Andy, who else do we need to invite in?
So this is for a litigation uh, update, and we would invite in myself and Donna Lanza.
Okay. So Donna, if you could tell us or let us know when we are all set, would be great.
If you could just finalize the vote to move into executive session, please.
Oh, I'm sorry. All those in favor of moving into an executive session, signify by saying aye. Or raise your hands, something?
Aye.
Okay. So be it. Thank you.